You storm in prayer, please. Come on, Dr. Hardman. Father, as we come before you today, we ask that you lead and guide us and direct us. Board goes by conducting the people of -- Lord, we ask that you look over our county, look over our country, and look over our state. Lord bless those that lost love once here. Like this county has really had a lot of tragedy and lost a lot of good, fine people, especially the Indian Pass. Lord, in closing again, I say that you look over us and guide us as we -- in this -- Amen. Storm in prayer. In the --
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to every body for which it stands, one nation, unregard, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Got a few strikers coming in. Welcome to the July 8th regular meeting of Gulf County Board of County Commissioners. I hope everyone had a wonderful Fourth of July. I did, and I'm sure most of you did likewise. This time, I'm going to go to the audience. Anyone in the audience have any questions concerning the consent agenda or the information packet? Do be recognized. No one from the audience? Then I'll turn to the staff. Does any of the staff members have any question concerning the consent agenda or the information packet? No one? Then we'll go to the board. Does any member of the board have any questions with the consent or information packet?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I do.
Commissioner Bryan.
Pages thirty-two through forty-one.
All right.
The memorandum of understanding concerning the monopole, Beacon Hill.
Just a moment. Pages thirty-two through forty-one. Do you want to address those now?
Yes.
All right, let me ask this. Does any other member have any concerns with the consent agenda? Do you want to let's go ahead and address this? Is that fine with you, Commissioner? All right, if you would, please turn to pages thirty-two through forty-one, please. You have the floor.
Okay. I just have a couple of simple issues. One, I have a question on page thirty-six. Item B at the top of the page, it says, "The lessee shall keep the premises free of debris and any dangerous, noxious, or offensive matter that would create a hazard or undue vibration, heat, noise, or signal interference. Lessee shall use reasonable efforts not to interrupt the day-to-day operations of the county and its use of the adjoining materials pit." And I would like some clarification as to what the adjoining materials pit is.
Ask any --
Anyone who knows what that is.
Can the attorney or the administrator shed any light on this?
Mr. Chairman, this is the two lots that the county commission had agreed for Optimes Florida to use for the broadband initiative. They go out and they assess the property to determine if there's any artifacts or whatever on the property. Apparently, there must be some surrounding property that was in the form of a pit or something. And I think just to say on this, what we're going to do here will have no interference for what they're doing. I don't know, but there's no pit on this property. There's not a pit on this county property.
Thank you.
I've been out there. I'm not many times. I'm not familiar with a materials pit either. Do we know who drafted this document? Could this be a holdover from a prior document?
We didn't prepare it, but I can get clarification before I give back to Tuan and Carrie on the materials pit language.
Okay. I would like that clarified because I don't believe there is a materials pit out there, and if there is, I would like to be aware of it. This monopole is right in the middle of a residential community, and I do understand the need for increased ability for telecommunications here in Gulf County. I think we've all had those issues where our cellphones are not connecting, but we want to be certain that we are mindful of the folks who live around this monopole. But I'd like that verified, and I'd like that information prior to us entering into this agreement. I do believe that it may be a holdover from a prior agreement that was just missed. And my other issue is I would like to have some language added to this memorandum of understanding that provides for a buffer. What I understand is that the monopole is to be surrounded by a fence with cyclone fencing for security, and it would be very unsightly in the location where it is. People live right around this site, and I would like to see a requirement of a vegetative buffer, a simple hedge, something that would visually buffer the razor wire from the residents who live around that site. So with those two changes, I'm okay with this memorandum of understanding.
There's no -- Don, or do y'all know of any issue that would need this thing documented to be moved forward prior to this?
Subject to those conditions, if we can get a conditional approval, we'll get that language included.
Okay. Well, you okay with that then?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything else, Commissioner? All right, yeah, back to have a motion then to we would patience this to be the motion to accept the agenda. Got a motion by Commissioner Smiley. Second on the -- we got a second over here by Commissioner Jaeger. For the discussion, anything? Back to the audience. The opposition, pass five and oh. Okay, all right, now let's move. Next item on the agenda. Let's go ahead with the item number three, the public hearing on ordinance amendment number ordinance nineteen ninety-seven dash oh-two.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning. First item is the -- our review is the -- if you all recall, ordinance ninety-seven oh-two, from seventeen years back, there was a beach driving ordinance that this county adopted. Most recently, last fall, following discussions at the TDC and amongst this commission in public meetings, there was recommendations to amend the ordinance to permit weekly driving permits and also make some minor modifications to the fees and how the county goes about administering beach permits. Since that time, there's been other additional discussion at the TDC and in this commission meetings in the last two months that led to the instructions to advertise a new amendment to the ordinance of last year. The ordinance today, a proposed additional amendment to ninety-seven oh-two, has been properly advertised in the Star newspaper in compliance with state statute at least ten days in advance of today's public hearing. You all have a copy of that amendment in front of you. There's really -- I can boil it down, and I'll read it by title, but the ordinance today seeks to accomplish two things, which is, one, the commission's instructions to eliminate seven-day permits for driving on the beaches, and the second is to raise the fine for violations of the ordinance, which I'll go over in detail. Mr. Chairman, I'll read the ordinance by title if I may. It's an ordinance of Gulf County whereby amending Gulf County ordinance ninety-seven oh-two, titled in part, "Allowing for the vehicular traffic on certain coastal beaches within Gulf County, Florida," specifically amending the ordinance provision, quote, "providing for a permit fee and fines and providing for the repealer severability modifications that may arise from consideration at public hearing and providing for an effective date." As I indicated, the first was to eliminate the seven-day driving permit, and you'll see on page two that strike through in the current language. And then additionally, under section seven, A, B, and E, the proposed amendment to the -- for the violations are as follows. "The driving on the beach without first having obtained a valid permit shall result in a fine of $500 for a first-time offense and a $750 fine for a second offense." B is racing vehicles on the beach or pulling skiers from any moving vehicle on land shall result in a $500 fine as well. And then E, "Any other violations of this ordinance shall result in a $250 fine for the first offense and $400 fine for a subsequent offense." And then it has the repealer conflict severability and modification language. Mr. Chairman, there has been discussion since this has been advertised at the most recent TDC meeting, and we'll be happy to offer those comments to you. Between Ms. Jenkins and myself, I think last week, there was a beach ordinance committee meeting of interested community members as well as county staff. The beach driving ordinance and language was discussed. One of the recommendations that came amongst that committee and staff, and then we had some participation from our local judge as well, who encounters these citations, when the issue -- when the fine is issued on the beach right now, it was $250, which is the same as a driving permit. So there's really no penalty phase to the actual driving. People are -- the impression that was given is that people are taking that chance, and if they're caught, they're issued a citation, it's the same amount that they would pay for the tag. To adopt this ordinance is a form of a deterrent, and it's recommended that you consider the $500 fine. There's also consideration that if in the following week or seven days after that, if the person came in to secure a beach driving tag, that there would be a function in the ordinance that would reduce that additional $250 down, so it wasn't such a stiff penalty. And that was comments and consideration that was offered at that beach consolidation meeting. So in essence, if someone receives a citation, they're handed a violation and a notice to pay a $500 fine. If in the subsequent seven days after that they come and secure a beach driving permit for the year from the county, they pay the $250 fine, that that additional $250 is reduced by an amount that you all deem appropriate.
Yeah, that was discussion. There was discussion about the judge, Mr. Chairman. He sees a lot of folks that come down that are angry. Most people go before the judge are angry, but I think that's appropriate to give them an opportunity to buy that ordinance, and we can include that in if this board feels okay with that. I think that was the discussion of most of the committee, that they felt like that would be fine with them. So while it's still a deterrent, at least it's something to --
With a little mercy.
Provoke them to get their permit and provide a little mercy on their first offense. So if the board will, I'll include that language. We can add that language into it with a motion. I'll make that motion to add that language in.
We have a motion on the floor by Commissioner Jaeger. I hear a second for this amendment. We have a second by Commissioner Smiley.
While we've talking about this, I had one issue, and I'm glad Shirley's here. I had a conversation with a guy that was disabled, and he had a disabled tag, but he wasn't able to get the disabled permit for some reason. What do we require, Ms. Shirley? If you don't mind, what do we require for disabled?
Come up. Ms. Shirley, please. I know we can't. It's terrible.
Fans back there. Had a guy call me and said he couldn't get a disability permit. He's got a disabled tag and all those kinds of things, but they were asking for something specific.
Was he a Gulf County resident?
Yeah, he lives in Indian Pass. He lives in Indian Pass.
Okay, I don't know what --
Jim Neely was his name, and Jim called me, and he said, "Look, I've tried twice to get that. I've got a tag that shows that I'm disabled." He even brought in a statement from his doctor that stated that he was disabled, but they were asking him for something else, and I think it was a tag that disability or handicap tag.
Maybe a handicap sticker proving that he was disabled?
Yeah, and he said, you know, he just, you know, he doesn't get one of those tags, but if that's what he needs to get, the tag, but --
I'd have to see what he brought in. I don't know. I wasn't --
Well, if we can just require, I mean, if they've got a disabled tag on their vehicle, I think that would probably be enough for them to get a disability permit, but I'm not sure that we have anything specific in the ordinance about it in there.
There's nothing in there specific.
So, okay. We'll just work with them. That'll be fine.
Commissioner, in that motion that you, I think you have a --
Thank you, Shirley.
Motion and a second. Just so we have some direction, is it reducing that additional $250 down to $100 and lowering it $150? What is the recommendation of the commission?
That would be the recommendation.
Okay, so if they do get a beach permit within seven days after receiving a violation, you'll reduce the fine from $250 to $100?
That's correct.
Okay. If you can include that in the motion or whatever you all want to reduce the --
So include that in the motion.
So we're gonna waive the $250, and then we're gonna reduce the $250 --
To $100.
$100.
So is that a total of $350 in essence?
Yeah, let's get this cleared up.
Within seven days, that they produce the permit to Ms. Shirley's office showing that they've secured it, and they can offer that to the clerk's office and make that payment of a total of $100 in addition to the $250 they've already paid for their beach driving.
So if they had got the permit addition -- originally, they'd have paid $250, but because they didn't, now they pay --
There's still a $100 fine for driving on the beach without a fine versus $250.
And that's just for the first offense. Now, if it's a -- that offense is --
The second offense right now is structured at $750.
Seven fifty.
Or if they do not secure the permit.
Or if they do not secure the permit.
All right, we're clear on this. Is the audience clear on this? I see some, like I am, I'm kind of in la-la land here on some of this.
But if you --
Obviously, there's plenty of discussion if you can't, Commissioner.
If we need to, if we can do this additionally next board meeting, we can initiate this in next board meeting. If you want to clear it up, we can do that with something else. Whatever's easiest for you and makes it clear for everybody that they've got it in writing in front of them of what we're doing, gives the public an opportunity to see in writing, give the beach committee an opportunity to see in writing what we're doing. And I tell you, it's -- I'm glad we got a committee together because we've got a natural resource that there's a balance. You know, it's a fine line between utilizing a natural resource and protecting that natural resource, and that's what we're trying to do, is walk those lines to protect it yet let the public utilize it. And so that's what we're doing going forward. So whatever's easiest, Mr. Attorney.
All right. If that is the recommendation that you want to come back with some clarity on that second provision? What I'd ask is if you, as a commission, just so we don't prolong this for another month during the peak season, the issue of the weekly permits, it sounds as though there was a consensus amongst the commission that that wants to be revoked. So if there can be some instruction to Ms. Shirley and Ms. Jenkins that that is suspended as of July eighth, we'll come back and we can ratify the additional language for the penalties, but with regards to the suspension, we'll ratify and adopt the ordinance presumably at the next meeting on the twenty-second, but in that interim, there won't be no weekly permits issued.
That's perfect. We'll direct staff, and they sell them at the TDC too, to make sure that we don't sell any more of those seven-day permits. So they were causing us some problem.
Okay. Got a motion on the floor. We got a second. Now, Madam Clerk, have you got this? All right, you got that's the main thing. Questioning the board members? Questioning anyone from the audience have any input on this? Any objection? Objection? Motion passed five and oh. All right.
With regards to the public notice, Mr. Chairman, respectfully, just for the public, this will be put on the agenda for continuation of another public hearing, and we're announcing it today if they have obviously that language, and I'll include that modified language in the actual packet for the next meeting.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Attorney. Thank you. We're gonna change up a little bit here. We have one, two, three, four, four people that want to come before the board today, and some of them have traveled a great distance, and some have very important things to continue out through the day. So at this time, I'm going to ask the representative from the Gulf County Health Department. Sandy, would you come up and if you would, bring your --
New friend.
Our new doctor, Dr. Charlie Richardson with you, please. Thank you, and you have the floor.
Good morning. I'm Sandy Martin, CEO for the Fairly Qualified Health Center here at the -- pardon me, at the Health Department. I'm here to give an update for the Health Department operations. Right now, we've just closed out our fiscal year. We had a good year. We've reworked all of our business processes, and we've never worked harder or been more proud of what we do down at the Health Department. I have two new physicians to introduce today. Dr. Charlie Richardson is with me. Dr. Richardson is from Tallahassee. He's a world traveler and has settled in Weewaw Hichka. So he's going to be seeing family practice patients here at the Health Department along with Dr. Murphy. He's replacing Decon Roy, who is a longtime AOMP who has retired and moved on. I also have Dr. Musab Al Yahya, who is a pediatrician. He's an ER physician from Panama City. Lovely man. He couldn't make it this morning. He works ER overnight often in Panama City, and he's performing pediatric services here at the Health Department for us now. He's replacing Dr. Hunt, who has retired and moved on to live near his grandchildren.
Dr. Richardson, good to see you. We met prior, and we're glad to have you here in Gulf County, and I think you can render a great service to people of this county.
Thank you for the opportunity to serve.
Have good. Thank you. Is any -- Recognized?
Whenever I brought this issue up, I was mainly interested in the Weewaw Health Clinic up there. Where are we at with that program? I mean, it don't look like anything's going on up there at all. Is this Sacred Heart's issue? Is this part of the Health Department's issue? That's where I was getting at with this.
We work collaboratively with our community partners in Weewaw, well, in the entire county to serve all of the citizens of Gulf County. We do have Sacred Heart leasing some space, performing some primary care services there in the Weewaw Hichka building. We are also there, still continue to be there, five days a week. We provide birth and death certificates. Well, we provide all the environmental help there in Weewaw. We do family planning services there in Weewaw the first Tuesday of every month. We are also there with WIC services the first and third Friday of every month, and we have nursing services there the first and third Friday. That's a good day to do immunizations where the people are there getting their WIC checks.
Anything else? Any other board members? Sandy? Thank you. And Dr. Richardson, we'll try to take a day off and go fishing.
Yes, sir.
I'd call him somewhere between two and three in the morning. I've got a little spare time. Thank you, sir. Good to have you. Thank you, Sandy.
Thank you.
All right. Let's drop up now. Get correct up. We'll wait till they exit. Due to the dry season, all I see, we have some forest rangers back. I'm going to ask them to come up to Florida Forest Service for tower space. Paul?
Yes, sir.
Are you the one that's going to address this?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Come on up. Give your name and alter the clerk over here. Play the floor.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, my name's Paul Noah. I'm the telecommunications specialist for the Florida Forest Service. We have seven counties that we take care of here in northwest Florida. Excuse me. We have a problem with communications coverage, and that's why I'm addressing the Commissioners The north end of Gulf County is covered by a tower that's in Bay County in the Cattleway area. However, for the south end of Gulf County and out towards the Cape, we have a communications coverage issue, and what I'm asking --
Down here now?
Yes, sir.
Okay, continue.
And what I'm asking is if it's possible that we could work with Gulf County and put an antenna on your tower for our VHF communication system. And the Florida Forest Service has some resources. We can help, I think, Gulf County with some of their issues. I understand there's some concerns about the tower, and the state's in a position to be able to help pay for a tower load analysis and an RF interference analysis if need be to help Gulf County help us to solve our communications problem.
All right, what do you do in Bay County? Do you use one of their towers? Do you have your own tower or?
We're on the state law enforcement radio system.
Okay, so you're on a state tower.
And there's a 450-foot tower there. We have a 100-foot tower on our forestry, a tower up at White City, but in communications, height is everything, and this 100-foot tower is just inadequate for our firefighters to get back to the dispatch, which is in Bonifay, Florida. We maintain six repeaters in the seven-county area, and the one repeater for Gulf County is the problem that we're having to provide coverage for our wildland firefighters. And as you might not be aware, we also respond to all other types of disasters, for instance, hurricanes, and there's a primary reason for that. One is because of our communication system, and two, for our heavy equipment for clearing roads or, you know, putting line around fires or whatnot, so.
Okay. Paul, I think we can get with our administrator over here. I heard you, I was making notes here, about a load analysis.
Wind load analysis. Yes, sir.
Exactly, and I know the share. And you're talking about, and let's just want to put it on our existing tower, which is right --
That's correct, yes, sir.
-- behind the jail. Is that what you would like to do? All right, now, I'm gonna just hold you and go right over here to the administrator.
Mr. Chairman, been talking with Paul the last two, three years. The board's policy is to charge $1 per foot. If you go up 100-foot, $100 a month for a tower. Paul doesn't have money in his budget to pay monthly rates, but he said the state may have some money to do some work on the tower. A wind load analysis, we have done one in a while. There's several things we need. I'm not sure what all the state may be able to pay for, but wind load analysis is one. Typically, when we do one, then we know we have some tensioning on the guy wires that have to be done, and that's typically done at the same time. The big thing that we need done on that tower, this tower here, both towers, one of Weewaw and here, is painting, and I have no clue if state has any money to go that far, but my suggestion to the board is, of course, the service doesn't have money for the monthly rate, but it's real money. If they could help us out in the wind load analysis, the guy wire tensioning, the grounding if needed, I think we got the ground taken care of. It's always an issue every time lightning hits, painting of a tower, that kind of thing, and that could offset the cost, and then it'd benefit to the Forest Service if they can find money from the state to do that on our tower, and they keep us now and pay that money out. But if we can negotiate with and see how far down the road and put it back in front of the board to do it.
Paul, I think possibly, as the administrator said, we can work up something, we see what you can do, what you can't do, and what we can do. This board will try to, or I will, I've got work to help you now. The other, our Commissioner.
I'm in full support of trying to help you because I've had the experience. Forestry, if you call them and need them, they have the equipment to come in there and help you, and they will be there. I've seen them in action, and I'm all with you, whatever we can do.
We had to use it this weekend up in Weewaw Hichka. We had a fire, couldn't get to it, so forestry was there within a very short time and --
Yes, sir.
-- save a lot of, there'd been several bakers burned there because it was in a prime position. Okay, if you would, Paul, work with Dawn here, and then we can come back, and we'll come to some good middle ground on this.
I'll do it, and I appreciate your support.
And thank you for coming.
We'll work it out. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you so much. Odine? You're next.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
This morning is really sort of a piece of housekeeping for us. It's an item that we put on the agenda the last time I was here to see you for an extension of direct services for our board. We had to pull it back because we realized that the public comment period had not been fulfilled on it yet and that our board chairman had not executed the agreement. Every three years, we're required by state law to come and seek your permission to provide some direct services through our board. Hopefully, we won't have to do this again. I think the federal law is going to change, and that means that Florida's laws will change as well. We do provide some direct services. You all have approved this for us every time we've asked in the past. We do still contract some services out as well. We make the decision based upon financial efficiency. Where we can save money in doing so, we do contract services out, and where we believe it's more efficient for us to offer those services from the board level, we do so. And so we're seeking your approval for that agreement to go back to the state for further approval.
So move, Mr. Chairman. Motion by Commissioner Jaeger. Second by Commissioner Smiley. One from the audience. My position, five and oh.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next, we have a good friend of ours, Ms. Lisa Miller, Auto Face Program. Lisa, come on up if you would and --
Thank you so much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, dear, and give your name and all to the clerk here just for the record.
Certainly. I'm Lisa Miller from beautiful Tallahassee, Florida.
And I'm with the Florida PACE Funding Agency. And the Florida PACE, and on that note, the Florida PACE Funding Agency is a government agency created under Chapter 163. I know we know all of our statutes by chapter and verse, like our Bible verses. And that government agency is launching a program called Property Assessed Clean Energy. That name's a little bit of a, not quite right, but that's the way the federal government gave it. But it has wind mitigation as a part of PACE. By way of background, I'm a former deputy insurance commissioner. I spent about eight years going through, I was with the Insurance Commission's Office in Hurricane Andrew in '92 and '93, and then went through the '04 and '05 storms as the deputy insurance commissioner. And I saw what happens when the wind blows, knocks things down that are not strong. This program allows commercial property owners and residential property owners to strengthen their home as well as make them energy efficient. And it's really pretty simple. Our program received $200 million from a private investment group that is a reinsurance company. Because, as you know, property insurance companies want to reduce the risk of claims. And reinsurance companies, or insurance for insurance companies, believe that it makes good sense to harden homes and make them storm strong. So the PACE program allows property owners to do that. They simply can fill out an application on our government website. They can say, I want to do shutters. I want to do energy-efficient windows. I want to put roof straps on my house, whatever the engineers and inspectors tell them to do to their home. And they can borrow that money from this pool of money that we have. We have committed up to $1 billion. This is all throughout the state of Florida for them to strengthen their home and make it energy efficient. There is no government, this is not a government program in the true sense that there's any responsibility of the county, doesn't take any staff resources. You don't have to commit any monies to it. My program, and I just live an hour and a half away, will be involved with your contractors. Bread and milk, please, and make sure to get the black pepper. I'm just kidding. No problem, Mr. Chairman. So that recipe to make that home harder is really up to the consumer and their contractor. I just left Jefferson County on July 1st. Four contractors were in the audience, and they were excited about the fact that they can use this as a marketing tool to get folks to swing some hammers and do some economic development in the community. And I'm working with Escambia County. I get to work in all the North Florida counties. And I have Veronica Cross with me, who will be helping us kind of get this moving in our part of the world. I will tell you that South Florida and Central Florida is competing heavily to get the programs up and running in their counties. I'd like us to do it in our counties and spend that $200 million in North Florida as quickly as we can. And it's as simple as the set of documents that I've left with Jeremy and Michael and the chairman will be executed by the commission, and we're off to the races. So in a nutshell, folks, commercial, residential, that want to strengthen their home, make it wind-resistant, storm-strong, can get access to funds to do that at a interest rate between, say, 5% to 7%. It changes every week. Work with our, they can do it online or telephone in what they want to do. We work with them to get their home evaluated. And then we're off to the races with your contractor labor in the area.
Lisa, one question. Taking notes here. You mentioned energy and wind, so it's a duel.
Even though it's called Property Assessed Clean Energy. And the property assessed piece is that the monies are paid back through the property owner's property tax. So the tax collector, we just did this in Jefferson County, tweaks their billing practices. And they just put a line on them on there if someone borrows $10,000 over a 20-year period. And it's, you know, a couple hundred dollars a month or whatever that is. You know, they just would show on the billing, here's what they're paying for their PACE reimbursement, instead of writing a check to a bank.
Or the businesses that would like to utilize this service. It's not a free service. They have to pay for it. But there's stipulations how they can pay it back over long term.
Absolutely. And we work with each individual borrower to make sure that they don't, like, there's an actual section of the statute, they can't borrow more than 20% of their just value. We have safeguards in place if their homes, yes, a lot of safeguards in place.
That's good. That's good. Anyone from the audience, any question?
Thank you. So I'll-
And we'll see each other when, hearing about another whenever our next meeting.
I think, exactly, over the month, or I believe, one of the, go ahead, Mr. Hammond.
Oh, yeah, okay. All right, let's hold right here. Mr. Attorney?
Ms. Miller's provided a resolution and a proposed non-exclusive subscription agreement for Gulf County. Some of the things in there and reviewing it, and I'll provide it. And I've read through it. Obviously, within five days after these funding sources come through, they record this. This is a public record. So just as a lending institution, they'll record it and encumber the property for the money that's provided to them. But what I will do is, subject to this commission's approval, is I'll place that resolution with some modifications in your next agenda packet. If you want to approve, and I'll put the resolution in your packet at the next meeting. And then, subject to attorney review, we'll have the subscription agreement approved as well and authorize the chairman for his signature.
Motion on that?
I do. And again, just one of the things I know Ms. Miller's emphasized is non-advalorm tax dollars. So this is not a cost to the commission. This is not a cost to the taxpayers. This is, in essence, a loan to these private commercial landowners.
Mr. Chairman, if you need a motion, a motion to agree with the process.
Let's do that, and we clear up, and pushing by Commissioner Jaeger. Second. Mr. Smiley, second here.
I would love to do that. Always looking for a reason to come back to your part of the world. Thank you.
I didn't want from an audience on this, it's just another program we, not another, it's a program to help people that need.
Mr. Chairman, and when it comes back up, Lisa and I had talked. She wanted to put on a workshop for the contractors. The positive thing here is it's voluntary, of course. And it can help folks that want to get help, you know. But it will employ local contractors. They use local contractors to do all the work. So that, I mean, it's a win-win for everyone that wants to get home improvements.
On participation.
And I believe, I don't know if you said it, but I believe they even have solar panels. If someone was interested in solar panels.
Solar panels. In fact, I don't know if you know, one of the Commissioners in Escambia County is about to go off the grid. He's put so much solar efficiency in his home possibility. Okay?
All right.
Thank you very much.
We got a motion, a second here, and do you, Madam Clerk, do you have the, pushing this? If a discussion on the motion? Anyone from the audience have any input on it? Not, any objection? Motion passed, five and oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Lisa, thank you. Have a safe trip back home.
Yes, sir. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Time, turn to the county staff business. Roberts, have the first shot. Madam Clerk? Larry?
All right, Chairman. How do you have the floor, if you want to? This is in regards to the White City boat dock, the damage out there. I want to give a small update on it. We have, since the damage, we've received two estimates from contractors. One for about $25,700 and the other one for $25,000 even. We have filed claim with our company for $25,000. Since then, if you'll see the spreadsheet that I've given to you, you'll see the replacement cost of $25,000, a depreciation number for $5,087. And then you'll see the $19,000 number minus that depreciation with the proposed value of $19,913. What the insurance company is going to do is cut us a check for $9,913. That's that $19,000 minus our deductible of $10,000. They'll cut us a check for that $9,900 number. And we'll begin to get the repairs. After we do repair that dock, we'll submit proof. And they'll send us another check for the $5,087. Now, if that number comes in higher, change orders or such, that will increase. What we've done now, we've got an RFP out. It should go out Thursday. We'll take bids through Friday, the 25th of this month, and open them on the 28th. I don't know, Mr. Attorney, if you want to, if you think we need a vote to accept that amount?
Going to get a check for $9,913, less than $10,000.
That's correct.
Going back against the, my understanding from boat struck this or any vessel-
That's correct.
-struck this, now, it shouldn't cost the county money, or we're going to be able to reclaim our money.
What will happen is, we'll go through the subrogation process. Our insurance company, after the repairs are done, they'll go after their, the responsible party's insurance company.
That's our insurance company.
That's right. They'll go after the responsible party's insurance company.
All right, now, over here to the, did you want the attorney to address?
Maybe, maybe, do we need a vote to accept that?
I would encourage the commission to accept the recommendations of staff on the proposed resolution with regards to the distribution from the insurance company.
And we're at that point. Anything else, Mr.?
That's all.
All right, on that, now we'll go. Commissioner Brian?
I just have one question. In the subrogation process, when they go after the boat owner and/or their insurance company, will that be for the entire amount, including our deductible?
Yes, it'll be for the full amount. And if, for some reason, if the repairs are over the 25, they'll go after them for that amount.
For the full amount. So for the public's information, it would be for all of the cost to the county?
That's correct.
Anything else?
I'll make that motion.
All right. Got a motion on the floor by Commissioner Brian?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Jaeger. Wanting in the audience have any input or any questions? All right, if there's opposition, pushing passes, five and oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Higgins?
Mr. Chairman, good morning.
Morning.
In front of you all is your TDC monthly report for June. But before I go through the report, I just want to say, all accounts in 1st, 4th of July deemed that we were extremely busy, not only here in the southern part of the county, but in the northern part of the county. We had some great fireworks and great bands and great festivities. And of the people that I've been talking to, my partners, they said they had a great weekend. And who are these people? Because we're bringing in a lot of new people, which is wonderful. You're rolling your eyes, Commissioner Matheny. I mean, it's a wonderful thing.
We can't even get out on Highway 71 now.
We'll work on that. But, so we've had a safe, relatively uneventful, steady, but 4th of July, I've spoken with Lieutenant Buchanan and some of the fire departments as well, to be sure. So outside of some fireworks mishaps, I think, but everything, the weekend was a very positive, safe, and popular weekend. With that said, in front of you is my report for the month of June. May bed tax revenues numbers showed we had a 33% increase in the month of May. You shaking your head at me again? It's all good. So the first three-
I just don't know where these people, there's not that much room down here to fit all these people. I don't know where they're going to.
We're spreading it out. We're spreading it out. So the first eight months of the fiscal year, we totaled $501,531 in bed tax revenue collection, which is just about $54,000 more than last year. In order to meet our 20% goal through September, we need to collect just over $800,000 from June to September. And that's an additional $163,000 than last year. So we're still shooting for our-
Twenty.
For our 20% goal. Right now, we're just over 12% pacing more than last year. We did not meet our goal for the shoulder season. My goal for the shoulder season, which is September, October, November, March, April, May, I wanted to show a 20% increase. We showed about a 12 and a half percent increase. But we'll work harder on that for next year. Our winter was up 21%, which is huge number. So we'll be working on how to increase the shoulder season next year. I'm still going to shoot for 20 on all of the seasons. To date, the website traffic, and you can read all the numbers, I mean, things are going well. We've had, we launched our website right before Memorial Day. And typically, you see a decrease when you launch a new site for 90 days. We've shown an increase on mostly everything. User sessions are up, visitors and web traffic is up. Our bounce rate, which means when you go to a site and you're like, oh, no, this is not what I want, so you kick off it, is actually down, which is good. And our leads that came into the Welcome Center for the month of June were up 126%. 93% of those came from the website. So the investment on the website is working, and we're very pleased with it. And we'll continue to make sure that that's one of our premier marketing tools. I will say, now with the, with the revoking the weekly permit for beach driving, in the past six weeks, we sold over $2,500 worth of beach driving permits. So we will see a sharp decline in that, which-
Be a good thing.
Is a good thing. The beach, the beach team, they're out and about on the beaches every day, seven days a week, 10 hours, whether they're hauling trash off, you know, 800 pounds of trash a day. There, since Memorial Day, my beach ambassadors have interacted with more than 900 people. They've given out 75 leashes to people who don't have leashes on their pets. And they've replaced almost 200 glass bottles with reusable cups. So they're collecting their data. Most of the people that have come this past six weeks are from Georgia, Alabama, and Tennessee. And at the end of the season, we'll give you more data on that. Public relations, we've, just since we've started our public relations in January, we've seen a lot of coverage. The July issue of Every Day with Rachel Ray, and this is the national edition, has great coverage on Gulf County, Sunset Coastal Grill, and Seahorse Water Safari. So little by little, we're getting there. And we have some other riders coming in, two riders that are coming in this week during season that we're hosting, and my partners are very graciously helping us host them. As Commissioner Jaeger said, we did have a beach ordinance committee meeting last week. And one of the issues that we discussed, and I showed the committee video that they use in the Outer Banks for residents and non-residents. When you're purchasing a beach driving permit, you have to watch a seven-minute video. And it talks about all of the rules about beach driving, about pets on beaches, where you can go turtle nest and whatnot. And that committee is making the recommendation that the TDC invest in a video. We can put them on iPads. They can be at the tax collector's office. They can be online. They can be at our office. And it really, when people, when people come to purchase their permit, they either have to do a little quiz and say that they, and sign that they've watched the video, or they can watch it right there. I think it's very informative. It talks about the fines. It talks about all of the rules. It talks about the different seasons. And I think it's a way to ensure that people who are getting their permits, residents and non-residents, are informed of all of the rules before they actually make that transaction. What I'd like to do is, I don't have a cost for the, to produce the video yet. But what I'd like to do is at least get some footage of driving on the beach while we're in season, so we can produce the video in the off-season. And I will be able to show, I will be able to show some of the areas that we're talking about.
It's just another way to manage the resources that we have. Most people, 95% of the people that go down there know the rules and they follow the rules. There's that 5% that somehow we miss, or somehow just aren't going to follow the rules. But I think the video was recommended by the little committee, and I think that's a good step. Many of the communities that have beach driving do it.
Ms. Corbin and Dr. Hardman are here. They're on the committee, and they did, we watched it. We watched it with Judge McFarland and other committee members. And I think it's a good tool. And we can put it online. And we also talked about how, if you're a permit holder, how we can communicate with you if we have to shut down some of the accesses due to storms. footage while we're in season. I will come back in the next, at the next council meeting and give you an estimated price, which will go into next year's budget.
If you need a motion for that, Jennifer, I'll make a motion.
Got a motion by Commissioner Jaeger for this. Pete, I have a second. Commissioner Brian, a second for the discussion here. Anything, the audience? Opposition, pass five and oh.
Thank you. Trash on the beach and in the, all, in the parks is an issue. Working very closely with Mr. Cothran and Public Works to make sure that the work crews are complementing my team, too. Now that the city is charging for access to Frank Pay Park, White City and Highland View are very, very, very congested, and the trash there is increased in the past two weeks significantly. So we're working, we're using similar systems where, where we're scheduling every day or talking every day so we know how to clean. And we're trying, we're doing our best, we're increasing the amount of people we have on the beach. But, and I will say, Sunday's a very difficult day to keep that beach clean. But we're, we're working on it little by little. If you have any questions or concerns about that, please let Mark or I know, because daily we're talking about that. And then finally, at last meeting, I brought the issue of renewing our membership to Riverway South for $5,000. I did some due diligence. In a nutshell, the Riverway South system is aimed at promoting fresh water in nine counties from Walton up through Holmes and along the I-10 corridor. I don't believe it's the best use of our money. Our philosophy is, when people are here down in South Walton and we're talking to them, we get them up to the northern end of the county. I don't really have systems in place to bring them from I-10 down. I could take that money and put it into our website and do more than I feel that we're getting from that. However, if you wish for us to invest that $5,000, it's different from the AFC that we're, ACF that we're talking about, which has, does larger issues. That is, Riverway South is a marketing tool, and we can do that. But unless you want us to stay and invest those dollars...
I think you can do, I'm just, I'm gonna say up here, we'll go to the other board. I think you can do more with the $5,000 or less, and this is just saying we're a part of an ocean organization there. That's, it's nothing to do with the water quality, nothing to do with, and it's water wars we're having with Atlanta. It has nothing. It's just, it's strictly, it's the TDC. And if you think you can better use the money, let's, let's just keep it home.
I agree, Mr. Chairman.
Can I add in, yes, please?
Yeah, we need a motion, not a way she won't.
Okay. Well, if you need a motion for it, so move to retain that money in the county.
That's a T, those are TDC expenditures. You all have it in for the other...
We're not wanting to participate in Riverway South. All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Jaeger. We have a second over here by Commissioner Mclemore. Question here on, want from the audience to have any questions? Opposition, passes five and oh to obtain the money here.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, while Jennifer's up there, hold on.
Go ahead, you have it, and I...
We had a 850 magazine that wants to recognize Jennifer. There, it's a kind of inaugural event for them, but they want to recognize women in business. And Jennifer was one of the ones that they chose to do that, so I think I wanted to give her a little shout out, and her to go to wherever she needs to go to receive that award. I think it's Tallahassee or, and so we appreciate your hard work, and that's great recognition. And 850, if you don't know about 850, it's, it speaks of the area code. It covers the 850 area code area. So it's a great honor, and we appreciate your hard work, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Ms. Jenkins.
I want to commend you, too, on the word you used. The people working the beach, I think, two gentlemen, am I correct there? And they are ambassadors, and I've had some people, I mean, said they're doing, they're information, they're not law enforcement, they're information out there, they're out there to help, and all indications, they're doing a marvelous job. And everything, you got some resistance somewhere, but it's, I'd say it's 98% positive, what you're doing there. And, and commend these, and look for a marvelous job.
They're doing, they're doing wonderful. And, and I'm, I'm very proud of all of them. And it's hot, and it's long days, but they're doing, they're doing a very good job representing...
Well, they're out there, we'll say, on a daily basis, and they see, they see the issues that we're facing. And I'll guarantee you, they have heard some of them. We probably have less issues now than we did months ago.
Yes.
All right, but thank you again.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, while we have her up here, speaking of those ambassadors, have you looked, just looked at maybe putting them into a rescue training situation, maybe, or something like that?
The goal next year, Commissioner Mclemore, would be to have them trained in, in more rescue, and, and maybe even one or two of them in code enforcement, so we can assist Deputy Smith. Because if he's on the Cape and there's something out in St. Joe Beach just covering, Sheriff Harris and I have talked about that briefly. But again, the short answer is yes. I think they're a great asset out there, and to move them into the next level for next year. And it, it's difficult. This past weekend, with two people on, they weren't able to cover all, they're covering about 30-some odd miles of beach a day, and just with the amount of people and who they're interacting and all that. But to have them have other skills and maybe have more of them next year, yes, definitely. And, and a couple of them year round, too. We are 21% up in the winter, people are still on the beach, and, and so, yeah, the short answer is yes.
I think it's great. Yeah, I think it's great. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Yes.
We have to put a motion on the floor to go to Tallahassee. I heard Mr. Jaeger.
She's got a travel budget. I don't think we have to approve that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer, thank you. All right. Mr. Whitfield?
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Nothing, Mr. Chairman.
Allison, okay. Arthur, if you'd come up, please.
Yeah, one thing, I plan to say, and then I'm gonna say one thing about what Jen's doing. I got my annual reports due for mosquito control on the 15th, and I need a motion to the board that the chairman can sign off on. It's an operational plan and a detailed budget, and a memo from the state that requires a signature from chairman. It's normal business, once a year. I just need a motion the chairman can sign it.
A move to allow the chairman to sign.
Thank you.
Second by, a motion by Commissioner Jaeger, second by Commissioner Brian. Any more discussion? Or would anyone from the audience have any input on this? If it's an opposition, five and oh, the chairman, you get with me, or the chair, and we'll take care of that.
Okay, it'll probably be Thursday. One other thing, what Jen was talking about that hasn't been mentioned yet, that's, that is a very positive thing for the county, is with Jen bringing these people on and doing what we're doing with the, with the trash and with ambassadors, we're, we've been able to take inmates off the beach, which has caused multiple problems over the years.
Oh, you got children?
Yeah, you got children, you got families, and you got a whole herd of inmates coming down the beach. So we've, and now we're able to use them for more grass cutting. And so what she's doing is not just looking good for what Jen does, it's saving us our inmate crews and putting them in other places. So it's a, it's a big effort between Public Works and TDC that we're able to use our resources in different places than where we used them before. So it's, it's a big asset to the county, what she's doing.
All right. Thank you, Mark. Thank you. Daniel? Anything? Ms. Simon?
That's right.
All right. Hammond?
Yes, sir.
All right. Butler?
that won't be here until October 1st in the new budget. DEO is asking us to, to, to guarantee to them that we're going to fund Optune to Florida in the amount of $1,586.30 next year in the 14, 15 budget. So, and we, we have to vote, and I assume we are, because we do, and we're Optune to Florida now, with the tower on Vicon Hill, and we're gonna keep dealing with them. But if we can, if we can get the chairman to sign this letter, we're sending to DEO, get that taken care of. They just want, some guarantee that we're going to fund Optune to Florida another year.
All right, I need a motion if we're going to continue with this.
We need to, we're dealing with them now. Down, forty-three dollars. I'll, I'll put the motion on the floor.
Commissioner Jaeger will continue for the 14, 15 budget. I have a second only. I mean, any, anyone from the audience? Pushing, pushing past five and oh, and give me the proper documents, not...
Legana's got the original. The next item is board consideration, budget workshop, 10:00 in the morning, 10:00 a.m. on July the 17th. If we could have it, it'd be on a Thursday, we have our budgets, we'll be out of conference, we should have a budget, it gives us a first time, take a look at them, and hopefully the following week, have another budget workshop. But if the board could agree to a 17th workshop at 10:00 in the morning...
One question.
Sure.
Could, Mr., Butler, can we bring it back down to nine instead of 10? Is it nine better for me?
Nine will be? I'm opposed, okay.
I just have one comment. When, when we do have these workshops at 9:00 a.m., it's difficult for the public to participate. And I know that there is a considerable amount of folks in the public that would like to participate, but are at work. So I'd like for the board to keep that in mind, if they want public participation, that they have to schedule meetings when the public can be here, the working public who pay, who pay our bills.
We have to schedule them also when the commissioners can be here. My motion would be to do it at nine.
Again, I, I think our work is about the public and not about the convenience of the commissioners. My opinion.
Put down the motion. All right, I have a second, that we change the time from 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. on July the 17th. I hear a second to the commissioner's motion. You second it. I'll only will second the motion. Why is there any more? I think we've done, any more discussion on this?
On the public hearings, they have to be after 5 anyway, at the end of, once we start the public hearing process, where the public can comment and all those kinds of things. Yeah, okay.
Which is after the actual discussion and work has been done.
All right. Any, anyone from the audience? Opposition, this...
I'm opposed.
All right, we have, pushing past four to one. 9:00 a.m. meeting.
Mr. Chairman, next item to do with White City Voluntary Fire Department, negotiating with Catholic construction. In front of you, you see a number there for $515,400 for the building. I have a elevation view of the building, if anybody wants to take a look at it here in front of me. I would recommend that we go with this rate. I would, I would, though if you look on the second page, there's $20,000 in contingency money. I recommend the board take it $20,000 out, lower to 515, 400, down to 495, 400.
Well, hold $20,000 back, what you're saying?
Remove it from this contract, yes.
Commissioners, per the recommendation, we... paying $1,000.
You know, this is a, an issue that I have brought up repeatedly since I was elected, but to me, this is something that should have been in the agenda, that the public can see, that can be reviewed by, we're supposed to have open government here. And to have this handed to us right before we're voting is inappropriate. And I believe this should be tabled so that it can be reviewed, so that it can be put into the agenda for the next meeting for public consumption. And I'm gonna make the motion that we table this.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor to table. Next meeting.
I hear a second. I have a second only. Have a second. Motion fails for lack of a second. Can we have a little discussion? Don, you know, how long have we had it? And, and number one, I, I understand, we, we all want to do government in the open. That's, that's what we want to do. But we are the elected ones to make general decisions. And, you know, I understand putting everything out in the public that you want to put out, but at the end of the day, sometimes we have to move forward, you know, on, on day's notice, and, and that's what we're elected to do.
But Commissioner Jaeger, it's not a day's notice. We just received this one minute before we vote on it.
Understand, but staff and the fire department's probably reviewed that.
Well, if that gives you comfort, then that's your decision. As the, as the ultimate decision maker here, I want to have the proper information to make the correct decisions for the people of this county. I'm tired of operating in a sloppy fashion. And to me, having the county administrator pass out information immediately before it's voted on is inappropriate.
Okay. Motion fails for lack of a second.
Mr. Chairman. Just a minute.
If I can give some background, again, I'm talking with Don, but this is the third part of a contract that y'all signed six months ago. The first part was selecting the, the individual and having the survey and the site work. The, the second part was getting a designer, which you hired. We've already paid $35,000 to do all that work. The number has been the same from day one. We knew what our number was, that we had to work with. We just had some problems with the site, mainly because of the rain and the drainage. So, you know, it's not, there's nothing new. We've been talking about it for a long time, you know, for, for six months, and the numbers really haven't changed. The, the, there were a couple add-ons that we didn't expect, that we worked with engineer, and, and they were, they actually finished up yesterday. But this has been an ongoing process for six months. So there's no surprises, there's nothing, there's, there's, nothing's been held back from the public, and, and we're just, we're trying to get this project moving because it's drugged for, for quite a while.
I was there yesterday, and they were on site. Sure were. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have a comment. If in fact, nothing has changed, then what is there to vote on? There should be nothing to vote on if nothing has changed. Now, there have been a lot of problems with that site, and I don't think that should be downplayed. There's been a tremendous amount of delay, there's been a lot of problems with the soil on that site, I'm fully aware of it. The people in the community that live around that site have had to deal with the site sitting there and not being maintained and not being built. Clearly, there were not soil samples, samples done before the purchase as part of our due diligence, which apparently just wasn't done. Now, my point is, the work of this board is important work, and we represent every person in this community. So for you to sit there and say that this makes no difference, that nothing has changed, that this is something that's been going on for six months, but we couldn't have this in hand a day, two days, three days, or placed in the agenda ahead of time, again, is inappropriate. And we need to rise to a higher level. The people of Gulf County deserve more than this. And I would like to ask the members of this board to raise that bar for the people of this county that you represent.
Mr. Chairman. Thank what you asked, that we retain $20,000. That's what you originally asked, and we, we will retain $20,000.
Well, I, I had in fact emailed the county administrator for an update on this particular project several days ago and have not received a response. Yet, at this meeting, right before the vote, I received this. And this is not the way that a professional organization operates.
Well, that it. Mr. Butler, you now have the floor.
Mr. Chairman, on April 8th, I'm not here, I'm out of town.
What date?
April 8th.
Okay, all right.
You adopted ordinance, and Mr. Brian didn't vote for the ordinance, but you're still Lord of the County. Section 2... Section two, item, section two, item fourteen, item thirteen. This gives me the authority to negotiate leases, contracts, and other agreements, including consultant services for the county, subject to the approval of the board. Everything we done here is one hundred percent straight by the law of the county. No one has done anything wrong. The insinuation that someone had done something wrong is wrong. So it's straight by the book. You adopted this ordinance, I didn't do it, I didn't get the vote on it, and, um, so we followed your rules, and we done what you said to do. So what I recommend to you is, you got a five hundred and fifteen thousand, four hundred dollar number, I recommend to take twenty thousand dollar contingency out of that, set it down to four ninety-five, four hundred, and that's what we're gonna build that station with. We have money, majority of that money is in the current year's budget, it's been rolled over for years, many years, and the last portion of the money will come out October's money. So we, we have the money to pay for this station, that has been saved for many years. And as for the soil, the only logical place to build a White City Fire Station is in White City. You can't build it in Sneeds, Animal City, you must build it in White City. White City, it is a hard place. I tell the story a lot of times. Forty years ago, only place I ever put on a single roof on a house, that I had to wear rubber boots, put a single roof on the house, so the water stood. Drainage was bad then, still bad, much better now than it was, but we had rain, had it. Last year, we had a whole lot of rain, the ground is still full of water, that's an issue, we're trying to figure out how to work that issue. You, you just can't work in, in water, and, and that's White City, that's why we gotta build a station in White City, so.
I've been trying to build, I think, a church out there for nearly two years, and not much further along, due to water issues. Go ahead, continue, sir.
That's my recommendation.
Mr. Chairman, so move to, for the administrator's recommendation.
All right, I have a motion on the floor to... I'll second. Administrator's recommendation of the twenty thousand dollars. We got a second by Commissioner Jaeger. Are there any more discussion from the board?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have discussion.
Brian.
I would like to clarify that a commissioner asking for an update on a project in that commissioner's district is not insinuating that something is wrong, and it is not out of line with our county administrator ordinance.
I'll respond.
And as a county commissioner, I represent every person in this county, and I will continue to represent the people of this county, and if I am expected to vote on something, I want the information required to make the proper vote. Now, in White City, if you wanna have a fire department, clearly it needs to be in White City, and I understand that, but I also understand that in the contract phase of purchasing real property for the purposes of construction, many issues, including those issues involving soil testing, can be addressed during the contract phase. I do this for a living, I understand that concept. So, it's not because White City is wet, we all know White City is wet, those issues need to be addressed at the contract phase. I am not saying that there's anything wrong with this document that you've passed out. I'm not saying there's anything wrong with any negotiations that have gone on with the White City depart, Fire Department, the proposed Fire Department. What I am saying is, I received this document seconds before I'm to vote on it, and that is inappropriate and unprofessional.
Again, Commissioner, it's simple to retain a thousand dollars.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, so you are okay with us regularly receiving documents right before we vote, where you have no time to review, no time to prepare to sit at this desk and make decisions that affect this entire county? Are you telling me that you are okay with that?
This is an isolated incident. You take them all, one on the time. We've been, this fire department, we've been working on this probably for what, over a year?
Mr. Chairman, we receive items every meeting, several items every single meeting that we vote on immediately. This is an issue that I have raised since I was first elected to this board. I have pleaded with this board to tighten the rules and have a proper agenda and have proper notice to the public, and I always have a motion that fails for lack of second, always, and what you're doing as the chairman is you're sitting here telling me that you are okay with that.
I'm okay with retaining twenty thousand dollars, I sure I am.
And you are okay with us regularly receiving documents to vote on that we have no opportunity to review?
If they're in order, and, um, are in order, they have been researched.
How do you know it's in order?
Well, how do you know it's not in order?
I, I, I have said it's not necessarily not in order. I need the, oh, no, we're going to finish this discussion.
No.
I'm going to finish my statement, and I have said...
Hold up, hold up, hold up, hold up, hold up.
Do you wanna, do you want to do this? Do you wanna prevent me from finishing my statement?
You are going to get to finish your statement, but we were right over here, and, you know, have tendencies to get interrupted. You just hold up, I will come back, I will not deny any commissioner or anyone in the audience any time, but Mr. Butler, do you wanna continue on this?
Two things, two things.
All right, and then we'll be through with you, and then you will remain silent, okay, unless asked. Okay, go ahead.
Yes, sir, absolutely. Yeah, my comment about the situation, you, Commissioner, you said it was wrong for me to hand this out this moment before the meeting.
That's correct.
Straight by the book, straight by your book, it's not my book, it's your book. I didn't create this book, you created this book, it's your book, straight by your book. Two, documentation, the light that I got the final number yesterday at five twenty-six p.m., that's when I got the final negotiated number. I didn't have it yesterday morning, didn't have it two weeks ago, a month ago, or two months ago, I got it at five twenty-six p.m., and after several meetings, several meetings over the last several days, and, and actually wound up with like four different correspondents yesterday, last one at five twenty-six, it's a time on the email. But the insinuation comment is, you said it was wrong for me to hand this out this moment before the meeting. I'm one hundred percent absolutely correct in handing it out to you. I'm, I'm going by your ordinance, it's not my ordinance, it says, I have the authority to negotiate leases, contracts, and other agreements, including consultant services for the county, subject to the approval of the board. Good.
Chairman?
Is that it? Uh, Mr. Butler, is that it?
Yes, sir.
All right, thank you. Now we'll go back over here.
Thank you.
You have the floor.
Subject to approval of the board. You stated that at the end of what you read from the policy. Subject to the approval of the board. I'm a member of this board, I cannot give my approval or disapproval on any issue that I have not had the opportunity to properly review. Now, I am not saying you don't have the right to negotiate or enter into agreements, but when it says subject to the approval of the board, that approval has to be an educated and informed approval. I am not a rubber stamp, and it is inappropriate for you or anyone else to pass out things right before the meeting or right before we vote, other than something that is a very simple ministerial task, something that we have been working on, and maybe a resolution that has to do with God and country that we all can easily agree on. This is the business of the county, and this is important, and it's your job as the county administrator to have the timing properly timed, so that we can have this information. So whatever you're negotiating with the contractor or whoever else, you need to time that properly, so that this information comes to the board for its approval for proper review. Now, I know that this is how this board has functioned, and you are operating within the way that the board has always functioned, but what I'm saying is this is incorrect, and that is why I'm bringing it back to the members of this board and asking Mr. Chairman if he is okay, and you have avoided asking the question, and I'm not asking about the twenty thousand dollars, I'm asking if you are okay with us continually voting on business issues that are placed before you moments before you vote.
I stated, if they're in order, I'm fine. If I have questions, I'll do just like you did here. Now, do you have questions with other items in this?
I have not had time to review this. I was handed this right before the vote. How do you know it's in order?
Just like I said, how do you know it's not in?
I'm not saying it's not in order, it's not the same thing. Do not put your hand in my face.
I'm, I'm, I'm not pointing, this is, I'm just asking you.
I am tired...
And I wanted to recognize him, that you have the floor, that's all.
I am, I am tired of trying to be civil with people have, who have absolutely no sense of civility.
Say that again?
I am tired of trying to be civil with people who have absolutely no sense of civility. In the April eighth meeting, Mr. Chairman, you were waving your gavel inches from me. Now, I am trying to work with you, but I expect you to treat me as a county commissioner. I'm tired of this, this board treating me as if I am not a member of this board, and I will continue to fight for the people of Gulf County, and in particular, the people of District Three. No matter how much pushback I get, no matter how many times I have important issues placed in front of me moments before we vote, I'm going to continue this argument, and you all can continue to make the decisions that you make and decide if those are the best decisions for the people of Gulf County.
All right, is that it? Okay. Now, sir, Commissioner, you have the floor.
Mr. Chairman, as a commissioner of Gulf County, the only thing that I have going for me to make my job a success is this staff. I have a question, I stepped to one of these guys. These are the professionals in the business that we're in, county government. If I feel like at the end of the day, if one of those staff guys misled me on purpose, we'll address that, but the work that I have got from each one of those guys, I've never been misled. They give me good advice, they tell me both sides of it, any questions I ask, I take time out, I come out here, I talk to them, go to their offices, sit down and talk to them. So any information that I need to know from any of this staff, I take time out and I go to them to find out, they give me my information, they help me make my decision on whether I vote yes or no. It's their job to do the research, it's their job to get the answer and bring it back to me. That's what they do. I think the staff does a very good job giving that information back to me. I can't speak for no other commissioner, I just speak for myself. So when it's time to make a decision, I have no problem going with the recommendations of the staff. They never led me down a one-way street. So, and if someone do lead me down a one-way street, I'll attend to that when that happen. That's just my personal comment towards the staff. So I think the guys is doing a great job, but, 'cause I don't say it before, we've been such a small government, people putting us on a scale with these bigger governments, where each commissioner got their own staff. Back here, we got one staff, five commissioners. I just can't walk in Don Butler's office and tell Don to drop everything for Commissioner Bicamore and jump on mine. We got one staff. I get this repeated question every time I go to a conference, how do you guys operate with just one staff? That question is asked to me repeatedly, how do you guys do it? You got one attorney, you got one manager, you got one staff that handles all five commissioners. So if this staff come to me with a recommendation, I ask my questions with them, 'cause I do sit down with them, and find out, I take time out to come out here, find out what's going on, and I leave my vote to the recommendation that they give me. So I just wanna leave it right there.
All right, thank you. Okay. Butler, you still have the floor, or was that it on this? Wait a minute, oh, yeah, we got this motion to, uh, I, and I think it's second by committee. Who, read it back, we got...
Mr. Jaeger's second.
Jaeger's second, that's correct. Read the motion back, 'cause we done had quite a bit of confusion here, and...
To withhold the twenty thousand dollars.
Okay, twenty thousand dollars. Motion on the floor to retain the twenty thousand dollars. Okay, is anyone in the audience have any concerns over this twenty thousand dollars that the county is gonna retain? All right.
One question, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
Make sure, are we clear on this, Mr. Butler, is this all you need on this motion?
Four ninety-five, four hundred.
Yeah, gonna cut it from five fifteen to four ninety-five, four hundred.
And we're cutting the twenty out, I guess, really, that contingency, and the only way you add more money to it this board, we gotta vote on add more money back to it, if something were to come up.
Okay. All right, any opposition?
I oppose.
Motion pass, four and one. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, next...
Butler, you still have the floor.
Next item, South Gulf County Volunteer Fire Department, county commissioner agreed for them to go out for, for qualifications for someone to design and build a two-bay addition to the number-one fire station, the old fire station. We received two bids pursuant to thirteen fourteen dash twenty, One for Ram LLC Construction out Tallahassee, and Kathy Construction and Development. I, I have reviewed both, Lee Collinsworth has reviewed both, we agreed that both have substantial background in building fire stations and government buildings, and, and both, both are really very qualified. My recommendation to you is to allow Kathy Construction to design and build the South Gulf County Volunteer Fire Station addition, the two-bay addition. Once we negotiate, negotiate with them, we'll come back to you with design fees, the amount, put it back in front of the board for the board approval, and then that'd be the first step, and then at some later step, we negotiate with them on what it's gonna cost, and we'll be back in front of board with that.
You need a motion to that, Don, for, okay.
Yes, sir.
So move for the recommendation, and South Gulf County Fire Department was involved in all that too, so they're full, full aware of it, and I think he built the, the last one out there, so.
Ask Kathy, is that your recommendation?
Yes, sir.
Here, a second only. Second by Commissioner. Further discussion, any, any audience have any concern with it? Opposition?
I, I'm opposed, strictly because we have nothing in front of us, nothing in the agenda, and I believe this is an improper vote.
Motion pass. Butler, you still have the floor.
Mr. Chairman, my last item, and I hate to have to bring this up, I'm gonna pass out a couple emails that I received from Commissioner Bryan. On these two emails, one dated June the twenty-sixth, one dated July the second, I have highlighted the inaccuracies in her email to me on June twenty-sixth and also on July the second. What you see in yellow is incorrect. And, Mr. Chairman, we do a very good job controlling meetings, I'll go, I'm, I'm ready to go just as deep, if we need to go with it, or just as brief if we need to go with it. What I'm saying is, if I don't say something, it looks like this might be the truth, and, and it's not the truth. Mr. Bryan has a history of putting false things in emails. He did it with me before, that was mine, her not damn dragged out in this boardroom back last year. It's not pretty, it's not good people have to look at and listen to, but it's not right for a commissioner to send to me false information in emails. And Mr. Bryan commented earlier about requesting certain things, it is very hard to, to respond after you get a lot of things said that's incorrect to you, and then demand a dozen items. That really has nothing to do with me, it has to do with other people. But I like to hand these out, I'm, I'm ready to go just as deep as we need to go with it, but what I'm saying is, what's in yellow is incorrect, and, and I don't like it. Mr. Bryan is interfering with my business as county administrator. We have ordinance that keeps county commissioner from interfering with my business, she interferes with me, she interferes with my staff, and, and it's a, it's a peculiar situation, and oh, oh, as you got yourself backed up into a corner. Mr. Bryan has a hard time dealing with the other four commissioners, I'm not speaking for the other four commissioners, I'm side... I'm sidebar looking. She hadn't been in my office last two, three months. I understand she's been in the building, but not in my office last two, three months. She has a hard time dealing with the county attorney. She will not deal with Mr. Hammond. He's not here today, but the most honest man in this room, David Richardson, on April 8th threw him under the bus as if he had done something wrong. He didn't do anything wrong. She had, two weeks ago, had a bad conversation with the one to do with EDA. Told the one that EDA was set up, it's gonna fail, like everything else the county does, it fails, and, and wasting our time. She has, in my opinion, been interfering. She's talked to Jennifer several times. Jennifer's not telling me to interfere, but I'm saying she's interfering with the conversation, including the last one last week, a week ago. She called, I called Jennifer. Jennifer didn't call me. I called Jennifer, and, and Commissioner Bryan talked to Jennifer about a meeting we had. The focus of the meeting was, we beach cleaning Windmark. We're cleaning close to bird nesting areas. Environmental agencies, Barbara Els and others had, had contested what we were doing. We sat down in the TDC and had a meeting about that, and nothing ever mentioned about anything else going on the, the, the meat of these emails. And, but the question that was given to Jennifer was, was that discussion, this meeting? Had nothing to do with the meeting. And it's a, I, I do feel that Commissioner Bryan, the only thing that she has to hang on to is her conspiracy theories. She thinks everybody's doing it wrong. And, and she is taking a lot of our time. If we read these, if we read these out, and you can see, if we take time to do everything the commissioner is asking us to do, we don't have time to do anything. It's gridlock. We are just bogged down. And I'm not sure that's not the, the desire, is to bog us down so we can say, look, they can't do anything. They can't get anything done. And we absolutely can't get anything done if I quit doing what I'm doing and start answering these emails. I mean, this is, this, these emails, a lot of these have nothing to do with me. But, Mr. Chairman, if it's okay with you, I like to hand these out, and I'm fully ready to discuss these. But in the end, will we discuss them or not? I'm asking this board to look at the interference by Commissioner Bryan. I've got a job to do. You voted an ordinance in place. I'm not even here when you do it, but you voted ordinance in place. If you want me to go by your ordinance, I need, I need to be able to go by your ordinance. I don't need interference.
Yes, you can pass them out.
Mr. Chairman, can I make a, a suggestion?
Let's hold just a moment to Mr. Butler gets through, please. Now, the chair will recognize Commissioner Jaeger.
I would just make a suggestion. Anytime that I've had an issue with staff or anyone else, I, I try to keep that behind closed doors, so to speak. I just, I go to them and ask them and, and, and have a discussion. Anytime we see emails that are sent out, and, I mean, it just becomes, there's a my rate of issues about doing those kinds of things. I, I, I just would, would prefer that if there's an issue between Commissioner Bryan and Mr. Butler or whomever, that, that they meet behind closed doors and see if they can't work those issues out and come to a mutual respect of, there may, may be some things that they disagree on, and, and there may be some things they can agree on, but if they would, I, I hate to drag this out in a, in a board meeting.
Thank you. The chair, I don't think it's proper here to address this and all, and I agree with you. Jaeger, scribble with Commissioner Bryan. It may be Commissioner Bryan. Administrator, the attorney, and one of her choosing, Mrs. Norris, or would like to sit in there, and let's see, because there's no point, and all it's gonna do is rub fault in the wounds. It's all it is, and it's enough of that. This be, this is an internal issue. This is not a, a, a open issue here. I could get, would you agree to that?
Sure. I, I have no issue with what Mr. Butler has brought forward, and I am happy to work going forward based on the county administrator ordinance. I think that I do need to work through Mr. Butler, and that's why I work through him, based on that ordinance.
Mr. Butler, do you have an issue with it?
No, I have an issue. I, I do need to make a comment.
Sure.
For me to receive an email with inaccuracies in the email, and it was sent to me at 5:22, eight minutes before the weekend started. It was sent to me. It was sent to Tim Croft at the Star. Sent to David Warner. Sent to Jennifer Jenkins. And for an email with inaccuracies to be sent to the newspaper. I mean, there's, I've got an issue with that. Yes, sir. I'm okay with, with your suggestion.
Mr. Attorney, just a moment. Mr. Attorney, do you have any problem with sitting down with this commissionist? All right, so we've got two there. We've got three. Commissioner, if someone to sit in with you, I'm just offering that. I can't, none of us commissioners, others can't, but like any other staff member, that's at your discretion.
Mr. Chairman, I, I am going to have to briefly address what, what Mr. Butler has said. This email was-
Wait a minute. We're gonna address it all or none?
No, well, now, Mr. Chairman, you've allowed, you've allowed the administrator to make a comment. I should also be able to make a brief comment based on the fact that he has called me a liar.
Wait a minute now. That's what this is all to have, the closed-door meeting to try to get, we've got, it's obvious, we have some misunderstandings here, possibly some misleading and all, and that's the purpose of the meeting.
Okay, I just have a brief comment to make, to address this, because people will view this meeting that may not view a future meeting, and I want to make sure that I address just what was said by our administrator. This email did go out prior to the long holiday weekend. The water and power was shut off at White City Park and at Beacon Hill Park. I was out at the parks. There were people having holiday events. There were people having family reunions. They were very disturbed and upset. There was no power and no water. I was also very disturbed and upset that with no notice and, and no warning, that two of our heavily-used parks, locals use these parks, tourists use these parks, water and power is shut off with no warning. And I did copy the TDC director. I did copy the chairman of the TDC, and I did copy the editor of our paper, because I believe that this action was harmful to all of the residents of this county that use these parks and all of the tourists that plan to use these parks. And the only way to address these actions is to expose them. And I did copy. It affects our tourism. We're trying to pull people in. We're trying to attract tourism. We're investing money in these parks. So yes, I did. I operate everything out in the open. Now, I'm happy to discuss after the fact the details of this email because I stand by everything I've put in the email. We don't have to address that today. But I, I do want to say that that's why the email went out.
All right, that's it. So, Mr. Administrator, you, Mr. Bryan, coordinate a time. Hey, if you want to do it right now, as soon as this meeting's over, you can step right back in the conference room. That's gonna be, you call the shots. You're the, you- All right. Okay. All right. That's your stand.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I don't, I really feel like they sitting right here, they can come up with a date and time right now so we can go and get this over with. I mean, why they got to leave out of here to come up with a date and time? I know the administrator know his agenda. He never had a problem with me setting up a time or anything, coming to sit down with him.
Commissioner Smiley, I'm a professional business person. I don't have my calendar in front of me. I will set up a time to meet with Mr. Administrator.
That's, that's the problem that we having with everything. We want to put everything on hold. Want to hold up everything. And just like what just happened with this vote right here, you want to hold it up. Let's just sit down and talk about it. It don't hurt. That's the cheapest thing in the world you can do is sit down and talk about it.
I just said I will.
Okay, then, come up with a date.
You know, I'm happy to say I won't. I have done nothing wrong here. I will take my time to sit with the administrator. You want, you want to take a different action, take a different action.
No, no, hold up.
Commissioner Smiley, what, what issue is it of yours when we schedule this meeting?
Commissioner, please. That's what, I'm into some of this now. You've agreed, you've set up, you've coordinated with the attorney over here. That's it. And then we can address these. I'm sure there's some misunderstanding, some misconception here, but it's no point. Just keep billing this out more.
Mr. Chairman, anytime the commissioner's ready to meet, anytime the commissioner's ready to meet during normal business hours, we're ready to meet.
Good, good. Set a date and a time in your- Thank you. Now, Mr. Butler, I think you still have the floor.
That's all I have.
All right, you're through. All right. Captain, thank you for sitting in for the sheriff today. Do you have anything before the board?
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Smiley, now we're going into the board. Mr. Commissioner Smiley, do you have anything before the board today?
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Commissioner Michael Moore, do you have anything before the board today?
Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman. I, I just, I see we have a city commissioner in the audience back there. I, I want to clear something up because I've received several phone calls concerning the boat landing down there. You know-
Commissioner Patterson, would you please come on up?
Yes, Mr. Bo Patterson. Thank you for coming up, but I just need to clear something up now. My understanding, we're charging, or the city is charging the out-of-town people $10 to launch their boat.
Or, or $50 for a year's pass.
Or $50 for a year's pass. All right, it's my understanding that you're charging county residents $5.
Or $25 per year.
Or $25. Now, it's my understanding that if you're living in the city, you don't pay anything.
That's right. You pay city taxes, so we don't expect you to pay anything.
We pay, I pay city taxes, county taxes. How would you feel if I charged every city, every person in the city, a $10 boat fee to come up there to land, land, gas and park, or whatever?
We would just have to pay it.
Put that in.
I had an email from a lady talking about the county residents having to pay $5 a day, but evidently she didn't realize they had a $25 pass for a year because she said they use it maybe three times a year. Well, I figured it up, three times a year is 156 times they may put their boat in the water, and it costs them 16 cents per launch. 16 cents!
But my issue, it, it don't matter if it's 16 cents or $25. That is tax dollars to begin with that builds, build that, that keeps it up, whole nine yards. But what goes me wrong at is y'all have allowed all city people to launch free. That's not right. I don't care how you look at it. It wouldn't be right for me to take a county boat ramp
Right.
and charge city people. It's just not right, and that is a hot issue. I hope y'all are ready to deal with it because my phone has lit up.
Well, I was called by a couple of people right after we started it, and we had a, a meeting that Tuesday evening, and I invited every one of them to come to the meeting and voice their opinion. Nobody showed up. And I say it again, if you don't like it, come to our meeting and voice your opinion. If you can't come to the meeting and voice my, your opinion, then it must not be that important.
Okay, I'll go ahead and tell you. I don't like it, and I'm on the county boat landing. We control those.
I, I understand. I fully do, and, and I'm, I'm sure we'll be glad to pay as long as the fees are reasonable like they are at the city. And as I say, 16 cent a launch. I mean, how would somebody ever complain about that?
That's not the issue. The issue is, if you're gonna charge a fee, charge everybody. You know, that's the, that's the issue.
And I understand that, and, and I just wish people would come to our meeting. Our next one will be on the 15th of July at 6 o'clock at, at City Hall. And I'll be glad to listen to everybody, and when you come up in numbers, you can change things sometimes, you know?
You know, that, you're charging me, my people, my constituents, whatever, to launch your boat ramp down there. You want us to help you down there with the hospital, with the tax dollars and this and that? All that's county.
That depends who you talk to. I don't think we'll drop them charges at all. I think it's county taxpayers' dollars, and I think we should pay it. I don't think we should be given a free, free ride.
Commissioner Patterson, we appreciate you coming to our meetings, and, and we've had some good relationships lately. I mean, we've, we've committed some things to the city and all those kinds of things.
We not gonna agree on everything, but again, if you don't like what's going on, please come to our meetings and voice your opinions, and we can work, work with it.
And I may be there.
Okay, I look forward to it.
Not as a commissioner, but as a, as a person that puts their boats in, boat in, down at your ramp, or y'all just ramp.
But those are decisions that y'all have to make. I mean, this is city, city commissioner, and I think with other-
And we welcome people to come and, and, and tell us what they think. I mean, we'll work on that.
And on a good side, I appreciate you coming to the podium.
Yes, sir. I love the whole run, brother.
Commissioner, I was down the 4th of July. I had to come down to attend a funeral. And the city needs some land for some parking.
Oh, don't we?
You know, these pickup trucks are getting longer, and these boats are getting longer, and one will take up, what, an 18-wheeler or take up, and-
I was down there one day, and, and I counted 114 trailers parked and all over the place. I mean, they're all over the place. We don't have enough room for everybody, really.
Oh, I know you don't.
We come up that ditch we got there, and we can make some parking space.
Uh-oh, now wait a minute now.
It's gonna real quick, we'll leave it up in the lawn.
Hey, Bo, thank you for coming, and I'm glad to see the people there. Thank you, sir. Okay. Mr. Michael Moore, you still have it?
I'd better quit while, while I'm calm down.
Hold up. Hold up. You're right. The Commissioner Bryan will go to you. All right. Commissioner Jaeger?
Just real briefly, I wanted to mention that, and Ms. Hardman's in the, in the room, they're gonna move the lighthouse, the plans are on the 14th of July. They're doing some coordinating to make sure that all emergency vehicles will be able to pass at any time that we had an emergency on, on the Cape and that type thing. I'm not sure how, still haven't got a determination of how long that's gonna take. I mean, I've heard anything from three hours to six hours, so I don't know how long it's gonna take. There is a meeting, I think, set up to review all that this week.
Today.
1:30 today. 1:30 today. So we'll, we'll get a little bit more information for the TDC and others, but just to know, that's gonna, that's gonna be moved on the 14th, or that's the plan. Did want to mention that we did have a, a, a meeting of the advisory, Beach Advisory Council. We'll continue to make that, those necessary changes to the ordinance and try to manage all that. As we continue to grow, there's always issues, but it's, it's always manageable issues, and it's a great resource for all of us to use, and we'll continue working on those issues. There's been one other question about are, are we trying to figure out on, on the next nourishment project? And we are trying to figure that out. We'd been waiting on a few things with, with our FEMA issues and those types of things, but I think probably that the Beach Advisory Committee will morph into something of how we figure out how we go forward, because there is a lot of areas on the, on the peninsula side, on the Cape side, that we need to address. They are getting narrow. So just for the public's information, we are beginning to work on how we figure out the funding of that next time. So that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Chair has a few items that our last meeting brought up about Dead Lakes Park or Dead Lakes Campgrounds, whatever you call it. We needed to make some additions up there. Mr. Mark and I went up, spent a good hour, camp host and over the things, and we've got a kind of list of things we needed, and I want to do this. I like, anytime I'm gonna spend money, it's gonna be right here. People in the audience gonna hear it or watching on television. That's just, that's just my philosophy on it. But, you know, this park collects money. We do get a little money, and we try to take the money that it collects, put it back, not reach over in Dr. Hardman's back pocket or Lovelace's back pocket here. We try. And we came up with a list, and this doesn't have to be, I want to bring it to the board, and we'll get further with it. We need, get it going, we need seven, eight-foot tables. Need a swing set, four swings. Need fire rings. These are very simple. These are very simple and nothing. That's just where you take a big truck rim and burn it out where people camping can build a little fire and contain fire there, it's a policy. We need sheds for the camp area. We need about four more sheds for the camping area. We need four hand dryers in the restroom. That eliminates the hand dryers, eliminates a lot of paper towels and a lot of stuff getting crammed into commodes. We police this every day. We did, and I don't want to go back here, but we did put up some of these solar lights, and we've got two. Yes, absolutely, they've never functioned since they were there, and probably when we get to this, I'm going to recommend instead of getting Gulf Coast electric, put them, or we just buy them and got the poles there, rig them up, and that way, we can pay for the light probably in three or four months what it, what it charge you Gulf Coast electric. It'll burn more, maybe $2 a month electricity. All right, another thing, we need a pavilion. Looked at this pavilion, another building, we need a 16 by 36 by nine foot high. Don't have the facilities up there. I explained last meeting, we may have two, sometime three birthday parties going on. Have Easter egg hunts up there. We had case where wedding and a birthday party. We need another building, and Moore looked into it, asked to purchase, this is a pole barn, it would be very compatible, be the same height with the other. It'd all be uniform tied there. It cost us $2,400. Now, our maintenance department would erect the building and also pour concrete pad, and then we'd take of these seven tables, three of them would go under there. And so, we're talking about 24, maybe $4,000 with the concrete and all materials for this one 16 by 36. The eight-foot-long picnic tables, the material is going to cost us about $150. Table, now we say we've got seven tables, three of them will go on the pole barn, four will go onto these four sheds that we want to build later. The sheds, a 10-foot by 12-foot by eight-foot-high pavilion or shed is going to cost us around $700 per shed. But we have some funds available, money we collect in from the park. We have a little bit, I think, what does TDC give us, $5,000 on each one? We have some there. Also, the...
You get to spend your money?
Yeah.
Tell them for normal checks.
Well, I don't know, this board may not. But also, we have up there, we have a, let's call it, I don't know, we'll call it a dump station, which is a simple septic tank drain field. Well, we're having problems when we go to dump, the people have to wait, and apparently we've, I'm not in that business, so I don't know. We need to look at the septic tank, more than likely the drain field. So, it's been there, the state put it in years ago. But that's some of the things that I want to bring to this board, let them know that we need up there to get that part because thanks to Mr. Jenkins here, word of mouth, we are getting more and more and more people up there, and more and more people are utilizing. It's a beautiful place, beautiful place. We have people right here in Port St. Joe to go up to, we will hitch a, on the weekends because it's quiet and laid back, maybe they can get a little peace and quiet.
We're going to charge them. We're going to charge them a parking fee.
Who's that? Mike from the six. Let's leave that alone, okay? But anyway, I would like, and we can prioritize this, but I would like permission to, from this board that we pursue, and probably, first thing we probably need to address is maybe this problem with this holding tank or this septic system that run out on the ground. We don't want that. I know we'd have to get with, with probably the health department or whatever and some licensed person to do that. And then, secondly, as far as the lights, that's minor, but then address this 16 by 36. We can do this, it don't have to be done in the next week. It can be done over a period of six months.
Mr. Chairman, you have the money to do this with. I would make a motion that you go ahead and move forward with it. It is needed up there. Actually, I do want to ask you a question. That's going to be my motion, but I do want to ask you a question because I had somebody to call me. Do we do monthly rentals up there? How does that work? I mean, is it by the month?
Yes, if someone wants to stay, we do have a monthly rate, but you understand, if they accept the monthly rate and they want to stay two days, no refunds. No refunds. It's to give them a break, and I mean, I'm glad you brought that, a good explanation is better than a lot of confusion. In fact, if someone pulls in there, and we have ample place, we have a lot of parking spaces up there. If you pull in and there's no one there, then you're going to have doubts in your mind, say, wait a minute, oh, maybe this thing's closed, maybe it's not. When you pull in there and you see campers sitting around, but we have the host, he stays there, then you're entitled, you're more than likely going to pull on in and set up. So, yes, we do. If we get to a point, and I hope one day we'll get to a point where you have to make reservations, and we can address that. They can't stay thirty. All they got to do is disconnect, drive right out the gate, turn around, come right back, just like they do in state parks.
Okay, all right. Anyway, yeah, I don't have, I don't have a problem. That's my motion.
All right, so you put a motion on the floor.
I got a motion on the floor for you to go ahead and move forward with these projects.
I'll second for discussion. Most of that money, does that money just go in general fund, or is there a specific fund? Do we put it in the Dead Lakes Park Fund?
We put it in the general fund under phase, we do track it.
So, we do track it?
I do, yes. She can tell me exactly what it is.
Look, is...
I can't, but Cherry can.
Oh, yeah.
And also TDC, because they collect their bed tax off of it. Yeah, we have $5,000 out of that.
Look, what I would suggest is just, if there's anything over procurement, just to follow procurement?
Oh, it'll come right back here is where it'll come.
That'll be fine.
Right here, in the public. All right. Motion by Commissioner Michael Moore, second. Any other discussion on the board members? All right, Mr. Attorney, should I abstain from that, or can I...
You can participate in that vote, sir.
Public on this, opposition and the motion pass 5-0. And that's all I have. All right, we're kind of getting a lengthy meeting here, but we'll stay as times needed. Next, we will go, is any other commissioner?
I brought this up once, I backed to the administrator. Nothing to really talk about, just something to think about for right now. Coming through the beach area on holidays, seeing lots of all these, and you know, we got forty acres of land up just out there from port. And I mean, it's just something to think about.
Thank you. At this time, we will go to the audience. If anyone in the audience has any business before the board, if you would please raise your hand, and you will be recognized. We have two people. Dr. Hardman, let this young lady, if you, please, come on up. Come on up, and we'll get you, Dr. Hardman. Thank you. Good morning.
Hi.
Yeah, it's still morning. Good morning.
Still morning, yeah. Jennifer Corbin, I'm from Beacon Hill.
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
One of the Beach Advisory Committee.
There you go.
But, you know, I just, I just wanted to make just a few comments, having sat through the meeting this morning. And just so you know, you know, I'm taking time off work to be here. I take time off to participate in the Beach Committee as well. So, I am dedicated to making Gulf County a better place for all of us to live. And, you know, just as a member of the community, sitting out and watching the videos at home, perception is something that we have to continually manage. And it may not be truth, but it is people's perception of what is going on. And so, in that, we have to avoid any appearance of impropriety. So, you know, when we're watching and we're seeing information being passed with little time to digest it and to read it through and to be expected to take action on it, I can, you know, speak for my community that we're going, why are they voting? Why are they voting? What is so urgent that they can't table that, you know, for another week or two weeks? So, there's an anxiety among the community that someone is trying to pull a fast one. And that may not be true at all, but that's the perception that has to be managed. So, you know, I would just, you know, encourage, as you're, you know, working through your agenda items, you know, to be mindful as to, you know, how much time people have had to see this. And maybe rather than, you know, coming and expecting a vote, coming and saying, hey, you know, could you consider this, and can we put this on the agenda for later? Has the public had an opportunity to see this and to weigh in on it? Clearly, our community has tried to band together to deal with some of the issues that we've had with, you know, the RV encroachment, managing commercial and residential, and trying to find harmony among all those competing interests. So, you know, we reach out to our commission, asking for information, help me understand, what can we do about this? And our commissioner has to gather that information. So, again, you know, the perception from where we stand, that it is inappropriate for our commissioner to seek information, seems very strange. So, you know, I guess, you know, in summary, Commissioner Smiley, I will tell you, RVs on the tourist corridor in the Beacon Hill Park, you know, that'll be a riot, and it just will. But, you know, we're trying to manage our community as best we can. I've been around the block, I've worked, you know, for a large, I'm sorry. I just need 45 seconds. Yeah, I've worked for a large corporation for a very long time. And even though I am within the letter of the law, when I take a hard look at myself, I have to say, you know, okay, I could have managed that issue better. I could have dealt with that individual better. So, you know, there's a balance that we have to find in this government of how we work together and how we work toward positive ends for everybody. So, you know, I would, I would just encourage everybody not to be really super sensitive, but to figure out, you know, what is, what is the main issue that we're trying to fix here, and let's work toward fixing it.
Paul, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Very, very good. All right, any, Dr. Hardman?
Pat Hardman, 123 Mariner Lane, Port St. Joe, Coastal Community Association President. Timely manner, the fire brought up this morning the problem with communication throughout South Gulf County. And this is a major safety issue. We've tried to address it from the Fire Department, the Sheriff's Department, and you cannot communicate out here. Business-wise, I have, I'm building a house renovation, and my office is in Simmons Bayou. If something's wrong out there, somebody has to leave the job site, drive all the way in to tell me that they need another box of nails. And so, and our visitors who come in here, there's no, they can't use cell use. Well, now, there are two different groups that have already got everything worked out and have gone through the Eglin stuff. Verizon has a lease from, out just as you get onto the Cape, which would be basically from there over to Indian Pass and all. And American Towers has negotiated a lease out at the end of the Cape. So, we have two tower companies. I don't know that much about it, but they go out and build these towers, and then they lease or rent space on those towers. American Towers will do free to the county, the Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, any of those. So, they've got everything ready, except they aren't building the towers because they haven't gotten any one of these big companies, AT&amp;T, Verizon, T-Mobile, those have not rented the space. And I think what we're up against is the numbers game. We are the forgotten coast. I saw Bay County wants that alternate route.
Yeah, I saw that.
Let's guess where it's going to go. We just don't have the numbers down here, and I think that's what these companies are waiting on. Everything is in place for those towers to go up. Now, here's what I'm going to ask you to do. I ask y'all to jump on that concrete plant, and our economic development staff here kept that concrete plant here. Why can't our economic development group contact these, as a safety issue, as a public safety issue, with the increase in the tourists that we have, the volume of phone calls that would be going up out there? Why can't we contract those, these companies and get Representative Sutherland's group to also get online and see if we can get some of these companies to rent from these towers, these space, and get these towers built out there?
You know, Pat, you're absolutely right. We need to try to do something to encourage that because it's terrible reception on Cape San Blas and Indian Pass. I'm not sure how far we can move because both of those are...
They're private?
Private, private companies, but I think, just a message from the county or a letter from the county stating that, are there any things that the county government can do? These, it's becoming a safety issue for our community to move forward with your tower. And, you know, Mr. Chairman, if y'all don't mind, I'll work with the staff and we'll get a letter to, I know Verizon's got a lease.
I think, I think what's going to resolve the problem is get that tower on the Cape. I don't think this is going to do it here.
No, it's not. It was the one on the Cape.
It's going to be the ones on the Cape, yeah. But here again, maybe we can, we help the concrete company stay here for the economic development stuff, maybe if we offer out to them some things, or even to the ones that are leasing for them. Because I'd love to get our Fire Department, Sheriff's Department having communication out on our end of the county.
We have it on the north end, too.
Yeah, but...
It's worth a shot. I think you're on the right road.
All right, you got it. Dr. Hardman?
That's it, and on the moving of the lighthouse, I have talked, it's a done deal.
I know it.
It's going to be, I was told yesterday that they are planning on starting to move around 8 o'clock in the morning, and they hope to clear off onto 98 by 5:00 in the afternoon. There will be no passage down Cape San Blas Road. And so, we need to get the, there has been no information gotten out to our South Gulf County residents, our visitors, that that road is going to be closed.
We need to do that after that meeting at 1:30.
Mr. Jaeger?
All right, just hang, we'll do it. Go ahead.
One thing that may help now, if that road's going to be closed down there for all day, we might want to try to get the grader down there and upgrade that cutoff road.
Mark, you get that? Okay, thanks.
You do that and possibly put some signs down, information.
We got to have something to tell people where to go.
Pat, if you'll wait till after that 1:30 meeting, we'll know more, we'll have more information, and we'll react to it then.
All right.
Okay.